Pledge of Allegiance to the 5th and 6th States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:01. I think the agenda is set, so we're gonna move right into presentations. I think Lynn is gonna start us out.
And I have brought some friends. I have Mrs. Williams and her fifth and sixth grade students, Humble. So ahead, everybody get your positions.
Hi, my name is Jackson Freely and I am the OA Elementary Student Council President. On behalf of our entire group, I want to thank the Board of Education and the Administration for inviting us here tonight. We want to take a few minutes and explain who we are and what we are doing to make OA Elementary a great place to be.
Hi, my name is Caitlin Sturgeon. We are a group made up of 20 fifth and sixth graders, five sixth grade officers, and one faculty advisor. We meet twice a month after school and occasionally during leave time when there are special projects to complete.
Hi, my name is Avery Waterston. I am the OA Elementary Vice President. Our mission is to respectfully represent OA Elementary's student body within the school and community. We want to promote pride in our school, encourage participation in school events, support our community through service, and develop skills to appropriately affect change.
Hi, my name is Tyler Johnson. We accomplish these goals by writing a school story, giving a school budget announcements, participating in assemblies and school events, organizing service projects, communicating student feedback and school staff in a constructive way.
My name is Orleans Wilk. We generally have two parts to our meetings. During group time, we have discussions about upcoming events, share ideas and brainstorm.
Hi, my name is Laura Williams. During group time, you're actively having meetings in the end of the month because this is where we talk about our projects and figure out what we need to do to make them happen.
Hi, my name is Tegan Hall. The next part of our meetings is when we meet in our action team. We start to choose our action team based on our unique skills and interests. Each action team is led by one of our student council officers. Mrs. Williams can just sit back and watch the magic happen.
Hi, my name is Tyron. We have tried to use the technology we have available to help promote our events and increase student participation.
My name is Dantek. And for our winter boot drive project, we created a commercial and we shared it via social media.
The video's gonna be right here.
Do your feet get cold on these bitter snowy days?
Hi, I'm Jackson Freely, the president of the Oakfield Elementary Student Council team, and we are organizing a boot drive. Please donate new or gently used boots by the separate bird's brood sports team. Boots can be dropped off in the office or center of the school with your chat. Please see your chat folder for a flyer coming home soon. How much make sure that every OA student has warm pants and shoes? Help me!
Hi, my name is Kate Hart. At Kena and Pet Project, we had students create footprint videos of their unique and talented pets to enter them in our student pet contest.
Hi, my name is Kansas Zino. I am proud of Operation Bad Project we completed after we collected extra animal and candy for student parties and shipped it to Operation Bad. They sent the candies to troops that received that.
Hi, my name is Olivia Graff. And most part of the boot drive we completed in December. We asked families to donate gently used or used boots. We cleaned and sorted all the boots and then Mrs. Williams mashed the boots up with kids in our school who needed them.
Hi, my name is Carson. I think we can all agree that if we had to pick our favorite project this year, it would be For the Love of Puss Project. We did to benefit Genesee County Sheriff's Department, Kena and Pet.
Hi, my name is Piper Hyde. At this time, I would like to welcome our very special guests, Officer Chris Arien and Kena and Deputy Frankie. Please come up and join us.
When we heard that Officer Arien near a new Kena partner, we knew that we wanted to help. We organized a school-wide fundraiser to help raise money for Kena for these ongoing vet cares, training, and expenses.
My name is Lauren Kessler. We asked teachers to submit pictures of their pets. We put those pictures onto donation cups. We then had students vote for their favorite teacher pet by placing change in the cups.
Hi, my name is Stevens. We also asked students to donate in order to participate in fundraising activities. Students could also reach for bread to enter one of our student pet contests. Officer Arien was our special guest judge. He selected a winner in each one of our student pet contests.
Hi, my name is Eli. We also hosted a fundraising night at Five Guys in Batavia on February 14. We worked with Mrs. White in her school banking team to count and roll all of the cash and coin donations. It was a big job.
Hi, my name is Hunter Tobolski. We organized this project to honor the memory of your Kena partner, Destro, and in honor of your newest partner, Frankie. On behalf of our entire elementary school community, we would like to thank you for all that you do in service to our community. We are proud to present you with this check of $1,135.
Joking me up, please, Sarah. Talk about... Thank you.
You're very welcome. We were so excited for this project. Our whole elementary school community got so excited about helping pets. It really touched a lot of hearts and really helped our kiddos come together for the cause. And I couldn't be more proud of this group. You guys did an amazing job, and thank you so much for coming and helping them really to see the impact of their hard work. So thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Not a minute too late. We actually, we started the meeting yesterday, and today, we go over to... I came, I had to end it early, and I had to go to Beth Rochester. They'll be fine. They'll all sort that. Those are the things that happened. That is why we need the support, and we appreciate the support of everything that you guys do. It's very helpful, and we feel very good about it. We would love to share some. Thank you.
Thank you, students. You did a great job.
Thank you. Great job.
Appreciate that.
Do you have any questions?
Great pizza!
Okay. I think we're on you, Nicole.
They're not staying for your budget update?
Trying to compete with that.
I know, right? A dog and kids? Come on!
So tonight, I have an update for you on the budget process. So in previous years, we have gone through and you all have received a detailed budget, but I thought this was a nice way to summarize before we, at some point, do that potentially or not do that. But to reflect, we've been looking at the process as a whole, and clearly, our mission for this budget is to protect all of our programs, be fiscally responsible, and to realign what we already have to increase student achievement. So this information from last time, as well as some updated information. So as we discussed before, health insurance increasing, adding our SRO, taking the assistant principal position at the elementary school, and turning that position into the director of curriculum, purchasing Bosse's other general fund, which I will talk about more briefly in the upcoming slides. We are currently negotiating CSEA and the administrative contract, and three of the four retirements this year we will not be replacing. We will be replacing potentially the speech therapist position. We haven't yet determined if the need will be for an actual position or if we will look outside. We are having the special ed review, so that's something we're discussing internally. If we do decide we may need to, just because it's difficult to get a consistent person here and we want to make sure we're doing what's best for the kids, so we may actually replace that with a position and not this year, depending on the need. So we're not looking at cutting any programs or services. Couple of highlights on the revenue side. We are going to ask to go out at a 1% budget increase, and I will show some later slides on estimated rates and what that will do to taxpayers in overall. We are looking at a 1.3% increase in foundation aid, and based on the governor's budget, he again has not approved anything. We don't have a state budget yet. It's gonna come down to the wire, I believe, but last year, we did not wait for the state budget to come out when we approved a budget, and we are getting more money than we had estimated last year because they didn't come out with a positive change for us in that. So I think I've been very conservative with the numbers that I'm estimating, so I would like to wait just a little longer and see what else we can get. So tax rates, the levy is set by the school, assessments are done by the municipalities, and the equalization rate, which makes sure that everybody is equal to what their assessments are, is done by the state for each town and village. So if you look at, is there a pointer on here? Is there a pointer on here?
Um, I don't know.
Okay. Well, so you can see, with a 1% increase, this is the rough estimate per $100,000 assessment that will increase taxpayers'... So those are just estimates and can change based on the equalization rates. This is the one that I've seen change over the last three years since I started here. We went from everybody being at 100%, which just meant we are all equal, equally assessed, to Elba being at a different assessment, the town and village of Oakfield being at a different assessment. So we have to really be careful when we look at those and make sure, when we're estimating rates, that we're taking that into consideration. So the change in the levy would be from 5.2 million to 5.313236 million, and that's, the difference is 52,660. So as I said, I want to read more about what the next steps are. We're refining the process to be more efficient here, and I sent you out a rolled-up version of what we are looking at in the current budget. I haven't done anything with the current gap that we have because I wanted to discuss that all with you here tonight. We did, the last time I presented, the gap was higher. We went to the administrative team and I sat down, and we looked at some of the lines, and we went through and really started to cut things. But when you're looking at supplies and materials and software, it's pretty hard to get to closing a $200,000 gap. So we were able to close 500,000, or 50,000 of that with that process. So we sat down and we looked at that. So that being said, we need to potentially schedule that meeting where we look at the budget, go as deep as we need to, provide the details. I prefer if the forms that I sent you with the rolled-up piece be what you all see, because again, as we've discussed in the past, when we're looking at like health insurance, there's employee names in all of those, and potentially, those things are gonna change anyways. Really, I analyze most lines in the budget, including the salaries and the benefits. Just today, I looked at all of the healthcare that we have. So what I did is I went through our current bill. I looked at all of the contracts that we have for health insurance, and I estimated out what our actual health insurance cost is gonna be next year, based on the 3% increase that we know. So when I initially go through and I project those things out, it's just based on who we have this year and going into next year. But in our system, you end up getting this 110-page document that John has over there, and it's quite a bit of minutia. So that's what we're trying to determine today. So when we can set that next meeting up, and I still want to refine, so looking at our revenue budget this year and really being thoughtful about what we're doing with state aid. What I did is put together how we would close that gap. If I had to do it right this second, this is how I would do it. I looked at our revenue lines, and based on what we're getting this year and what we're spending this year for Bosse's aid, I think we can increase that $25,000. Same thing with our Bosse's refund. So at the year-end, if Bosse's has money and the districts have paid too much, they send us all out a refund check, right? So same thing with that. Transportation aid, we can kick up a little bit, and our Medicaid, because we took over that process as a district and with some help from Wayne Figure Leaks Bosse's, and we've been doing a better job at getting our arms around actually billing for Medicaid-eligible students. We can bill for that, for some of the services.
Are you saying those are your, you can increase your projections?
I can increase the revenue budgets.
The projections of what you expect?
Yes.
So less conservative, essentially?
Yes.
That you're gonna push a little closer to?
Yes, than what I think we will get, based on our revenue this year. And then, those are the lines that we can reduce some. And as you see, health insurance is one of those lines, based on what I looked at today. So, some of the really important things to note in the budget that I gave. The SRO, that's just an expense that we're gonna add to the general fund budget. It is what it is. This bus purchase situation. So I just want to pull up the tax cap calculator very quickly, just to briefly show you how we were impacted when we got a one-time aid. It's 185, eighty. Okay. Rob, can I? Can you?
The SRO, we're quoting like 52. Is her 87.5. Expected increase.
Okay, so this is our tax cap, and I do this out so that we can see where we're gonna be years from now, because our debt service plays a very important role in what we have this thing called a capital exclusion. So here, so here's all the things that come into play with this. So we're looking at any of our debt payments. Those are up here, and any of our aid or revenue that we get on those are down here. So basically, since I started, we've had this positive amount here, except for this one year. When I started, if you all remember, we had a negative cap that year. Do you guys remember that, when it was negative? Well, the year before that, we had the emergency wall project. It was either the emergency wall or the emergency bus lift project that happened. So when you have an emergency project, you get a one-time aid increase for what you spent the prior year. So, that being said, if you want to combat that, you can buy buses out of your general fund. So I knew we were gonna get the aid down here, so I knew we had to do something about that because we didn't want to have a negative cap. You don't want to have a negative cap, ever. So we have to buy the buses out of the general fund. But really, the net it's gonna cost the district is $40,000 because we were already planning on buying one bus out of the general fund this year, anyway, because we're getting that aid in for the emergency building project. So in total, our budget increase is roughly 2% from year to year, depending on where that final number comes out. But a lot of that has to do with, as you can see, these expenses that some of them we have revenues for. So there's offset there. So this other tech project, I'm calling it, they have these projects that are through Bosse's, they're called E-Rate. So you get aid back on what you spend for these projects. All districts were allocated a certain amount to keep up with your technology infrastructure replacements, because they knew in the late '90s, wow, here's the internet, we need to keep up with this. So we have to replace some servers that haven't been replaced in a number of years. So we want to do that with this money. So it's really gonna only cost the district $15,000, but it's gonna inflate our expenses and inflate our revenue. So, that is all I have for you. So I think we just need to know, moving forward, a date, and like I said, I want to just really focus on the revenue, and we know where to go, but the budget needs to be approved. Would you all like to wait until after the governor's budget, or how would you all like to?
What are the deadlines that we need to meet?
We have to send out a first budget notice soon, but that doesn't have to have a dollar in it? Preferably, I would like to meet next week, late. I would like to have refined some of my revenue and then some of the expense numbers more.
When's the very latest you set?
The very latest is a month from now, but I don't want to wait.
But the governor's supposed to, his?
His budget hopefully will be on time, and that's April 1st, so...
So did you just ask us if we want to wait to receive a detailed breakdown of the budget you're planning?
No. So did you see what I sent you out? The expense, it was, I sent an email out, and it was, it included this document right here, which has just rolled up by what the expense is from year to year. Historically, you have gotten this 120-page document.
We tried to, I mean, narrow it down to where I, you know, unless the board members want it, I think in years past, you've received this 100-page packet that has every line item, every salary, every little penny that we spend. So we tried to kind of keep it concise, where we tried to give you a description of the code and the budget from year to year, so you could take a look at, you know, huge gaps in expenses or just see that it's being maintained. I didn't necessarily want to overload you with information, but unless...
I'd love to have a copy of the 110 pages first time on the board. I liked the synopsis as well, but I would love to have 110-page detailed list, too. Just one time, even.
Yeah, no, I mean, we could definitely provide that for you, but this is the first go, so then it's just you all, and I don't know if you do that after the meeting is done, set another meeting day?
Sure. So there's been some debate in the past about whether or not we do this before or after the governor sets his budget or our state's budget. It sounds as though you would like to be before.
I would like, at the very latest, I would like it to be this... I would go out to the first week in April. That would be my latest that I'd want to see it approached. Because here's the other thing, I want to just go through again. So I've been looking at this, and then looking at it, and looking at the 110 pages, and looking at every single line, so I'd like to just check one more time. One more time, revenue and expense, and make sure it's where I believe it is. I mean, it'd be my changes, but still, they're important to me.
About April 3rd?
For?
For our meeting to try to...
I already have a commitment to the town of Alabama we're planning for, April 3rd.
About the 1st? Well, is that, so you'll have it? In theory. It's been late before, it was late last year?
It's been late. It was not very late, but it was approved to like March 31st at 2:00 in the morning or something. Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking if we did it during that week, it would be good. I mean, we don't necessarily need to talk about it now. If you guys wanted to do it the week before, I'd be happy to do that.
Does April 1st work for?
What day of the week is it?
Monday. What's that, Chris?
3:40 to 8:00.
Okay. Jeff? Tim?
Camera now, it's good. Depending on what the weather is. My kid's got a baseball game.
I know, this is like a bad day. The coolest day.
We could throw out other days if we want. The 2nd?
I like the 2nd better.
Okay.
The 2nd?
Yeah. You're out of town, the 2nd probably, Chris?
Yeah.
I mean, we could do the same setup, though, if you want. I mean, I would make sure you had the document, whatever document we're working off of.
That would be good, I like to follow up.
Okay.
All right, I would go with that. Tim?
And 6?
2nd. Sounds okay.
Okay, let's do that. On the bus purchase there, were you saying one in the general fund and one would be by floating a bond?
So...
Or is it just gonna be one this year?
That includes a bus and a small bus, that 170.
So that's everything?
That's two. We had floated around, potentially, this year, we were thinking about buying a car out of the general fund budget to replace some of our older Ford Fusions that we have, and I discussed it with Josh, and we decided that we could go another year with our current cars and then replace those next year as part of another bond, as part of financing. So that way, we won't have the additional proposition this year, which I did confirm. We won't need a second proposition for the budget because we are using them, putting them in that line in the budget.
The 87.5 for the SRO, that is considering like a 3% increase off of what we're quoted this year. So your budget in 95, should we just tighten that number down to 87.5?
That's what I did. If you look at where I reconciled...
So you found $7,500 there?
Well, yep, I took, I took, if you look at the expense reductions in operations there, that's where we pay for the SRO, actually, out of...
Okay, so it's already there?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Nicole before we meet on this?
What did you mean in next steps, your next step slide, you said the budget process, refining it to be efficient? What did you mean by that?
I just want it to be set, like, this is what we're doing for the budget process. Here's what you can expect, and while we've had that in the past, again, looking at this 110-page document, deciding whether you need that or not, and going forward, basically, and making sure that everybody that needs to be part of the process is part of the process.
And then another question, on your third slide, it said budget highlights expenditure.
Yes?
I was confused about something. It says, based on enrollment, it not included replacements for three of the four retirements, and then your next bullet is not cutting programs or services. And will it become clear at some point how you're gonna do those two things?
Yes. So we don't need to replace those teachers to continue with the services that we're already offering, and the classes, and the courses.
Part of that is reworking the master schedule at the middle high school.
Okay. Then I'll wait to hear about it.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on to approval of the minutes. Be resolved if the minutes of the February 26, 2019 meeting be approved. Could I have a motion?
Come on.
The 2nd?
2nd.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Visitor's requests?
Mr. Sturgeon?
Mr. Sturgeon.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Recently, I was, I've come to find out that the Oakfield Elementary School District is the only district in Genesee County that has disapproved veterans allowances or discounts on these taxes. It was eye-opening as a veteran and a member of the district for my whole life. I would ask that the board... years, we've become to be a very big pro-veteran, you know, movement forward. We have veterans' celebrations all the time at the school, but I was a little disappointed to know that we're the only district in Genesee County that disapproved it. Um, it was, it was kind of, you know, to me, it kind of felt like a slap on the face in a way. I know it wasn't necessarily you guys, and it was probably here in the past years, but I think it's something that the school board should probably go back and revisit and maybe take a look at that place.
Okay.
But I thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks, Boba. We'll, uh, we'll see if we can get some more information on, on what you're asking there and talk about it as a group for sure. Anything else, Tara, that was all for visitor ones? Okay. Um, 5.1, be resolved after an audit of the bills, payment of the 221-19 warrants and internal claims, auditor reports be approved. Could I have a motion?
Someone.
Any 2nd?
2nd.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Uh, treasurer's report, be resolved if the treasurer's report for February 19 be approved. Could I have a motion?
Someone.
I'll take Jeff on that. Have a 2nd?
2nd.
There we go. Um, any discussion? All in favor? Aye? Opposed? Passes. Okay, 2nd reading on, uh, three policies, if you want to...
Yeah, you, um, over the course of, since the last board meeting, I've had some comments in, in trying to reword or rephrase things, which I've given you the edits. Uh, this is your 2nd reading, so they don't need to be approved. Um, one comment that I just would like to share with you, and I guess you can discuss as a board, a concern came up with the word interrogations under the searches and interrogations policy, which is 7330. That's a policy that's been around since 2006, so that wording, that is actually the name of the policy, and the word interrogation throughout that policy was something that obviously we didn't add or, or edit at all. And so, uh, the concern came up that that word interrogations back in 2006 may not be something that we want to use in 2019, and if we're revisiting this policy, um, it might be better suited to have the word interview or something, um, I guess less invasive, I guess is the word. So I didn't know, um, we can certainly make those edits, but, uh, I think for the most part, these policies are edited for what you had suggested, and I just didn't know if you wanted to spend another month certainly reading them and taking another look, or if you wanted to approve them tonight.
So are we all okay with switching the word interrogation with interview?
Could I read the, I just looked up the difference between interrogation and interview? Does anyone want to hear that? That might help us make a decision?
Sure.
The basic difference here is that an interview is typically less formal and accusatory, is a less formal and accusatory conversation whose main point is to elicit information, whereas an interrogation is formal and is mainly designed to get a suspect to confess. That was one person's, um... "Interrogation is interviewing commonly employed by law enforcement officers, military personnel, and intelligence agencies with the goal of eliciting useful information."
Uh, so it doesn't seem like it changes the substance of the policy too much. It, it may soften the wording a little bit, um, which is probably fine. I don't think it, I don't think it hamstrings the school officials in any way in, in being able to do what they need to do.
Maybe we should reread the policy, thinking to ourselves interrogation has the idea of accusation, whereas interview has the idea of eliciting information.
Uh, do we want to push that one out another month?
I'm fine with that word change.
You're okay with the word change? Are you suggesting, you're suggesting...
I'm just trying to look through it really quickly to see if there's anywhere in it that, that word change would cause us to stumble or...
Yeah, as far as the, the policy and what we need as administrators, the word interrogation or interview is not going to change really any procedure or protocol that we use here. So, um, you know, if, if you wanted to switch it and have, have the word interview, I, I don't see any concern with that.
Bonnie, you're okay with that?
I'm fine with that. My one question about that is the provoked, proposed provisions are at the bottom there. You're just going to move it up underneath the last sentence?
Yes, yeah, we highlighted everything in red, yeah, we will rewrite this policy so it flows correctly. We just wanted to show you the proposed provisions and what we wanted to add to that policy.
All right. So are you proposing that we, wherever the word interrogation is used, it be replaced with interview?
It, it could be. I did go through and reread the policy, and where it does say interrogations, I could reword that and obviously make it sound, um, you know, for example, "The questioning of students by school officials does not preclude subsequent questioning, interviewing by police authorities." Yeah, you can probably interchange those words.
Tim, anything you want to say on that?
No, that would be my recommendation as to wherever interrogation is, change that out and make it interview.
I mean, I could name the policy searches and student interviews, you know, just to make sure...
Is it, Tim, is it your, uh, idea to use that even when they're talking about police authorities?
Yes.
Interrogation?
Yes.
Okay.
The word, the word interrogation, to me, just doesn't fit well in a, in a learning environment with students. I mean, if we were in a different setting or dealing with, you know, hardened criminals or in the military or intelligence, okay, yeah, but not, not in a school setting. You know, you're interviewing, you're interviewing students, you're interviewing teachers, you're getting information. It's just a better fit.
And this is specifically related to students, so using that word, students changing.
Yes.
Chris?
I mean, according to what Lauren just said, that first sentence seems to be the very definition of where interrogation is, and while I agree with Tim, I also think though, when you're doing something like this, whether it's drugs, a weapon, that doesn't have a place in a school setting either. Uh, you know, I mean, these, these things aren't happy occasions. Um, I don't know if there's, if there's a middle ground on that. I, I think that first sentence, that according to what Lauren was saying, is the very definition of interrogation, you know, when the police authorities come in.
No issue. I was going to say, again, I, I don't think it's going to change what we do here, so changing that word isn't going to change our procedures or protocols here. Um, it's... What's that, Chris?
I'd be good either way.
Okay. Lauren, was there anything else there on that?
No, I was just double checking to see if everywhere that it says that, that that's...
So we can push this out a month. If you're not comfortable, we can ask him to make that change and, and look at this one next meeting.
It's okay. The other question I have, at the meeting, I listened to the meeting online that you had last month when I wasn't here, and I thought I understood, John, for you to say that the, down with the metal detector alcohol lawn scans, that you weren't thinking that this would be a daily thing, but that it would be for special occasions or special events especially?
Correct. School districts, are you...
Does that say that anywhere in here, in your red edition here? Does it say that it's limited to...
Well, we, we don't want to limit ourselves in, in the use of them. Um, I took these, uh, school districts are, um, creating policies, so they have the ability to use metal detectors, they have the ability to use the alcohol lawns if and when needed. What I meant to say is, we're not going to use them every single morning when kids are walking through the door, but if we come across a kid that we may think has something on them that they shouldn't, or it gives the, the opportunity for the, the district to use them at prom or at homecoming, um, you know, to make sure that the kids are coming in and, you know, we can, we can test kids. But understand that to roll this out, um, the first thing we need is a policy on it, and then we need the communication with our school community on when and where and how and why we would use these.
So if there's ever an occasion that you would use this on a daily basis, is there anything in this policy?
It wouldn't be a used on a daily basis?
I, I said, but if there came to be, is there anything that would require you to notify the board that you had changed it from your intended use?
No, because, no, because really this policy just allows us to be able to use those.
I would just...
So for an example of a...
Want the Board of Education to know about it if your use ever changed, your use or the administration's use ever changed.
Oh, right.
I understand that the policy gives, that's what the policy is giving, but what I don't see is a safeguard that should you decide to use it, you being current or future administrators, decide to use it on a daily basis, there's nothing in here that says you have to notify the Board of Education that you're going to do that. As opposed to this policy allows you, we've kind of agreed during the discussion part of the meeting that you would only use it occasionally at special events if there's a question about a student. And that sounds reasonable to me, but there's nothing in here that should an administrator decide to use it on a daily basis, that we would have to be notified of that, or approve it, or disapprove it.
So if there's suspicion that, that a student's been...
I don't, I don't, I don't, you're right, I don't think, um, basically, the, the policy is that you are allowing us to use it when we see fit. That's, that's it. Now, when, where, how, why we use it is something that we will communicate to the school community. But in essence, um, you approve this policy and a week and a half from now, we have a student that is, you know, that we need to use one on, whether we think they have something in their coffee cup or, or something, we will use it. We will, I will not notify the board, no.
Well, I'm okay with that. You're talking about a student, but what you said at the last meeting, and what you're saying again now, is that you don't have the intention to use it every day on all students, but there's nothing in here that disallows you to use it every day on all students.
Correct, but in, in the school setting, um, the administrators aren't walking around with, we don't have, we don't have time to do that. We don't, you know, it's just giving us the opportunity that, again, if we have, you know, prom here on a Friday night, um, I could probably tell you that we're going to have, you know, the alcohol lawns going, but that is something that we would roll out to the school community. It's not like we're trying to surprise people. Um, school districts are going this just for, you know, school safety and some of the issues that have popped up in recent school districts, so, um...
In the 3rd paragraph of the metal detector alcohol lawn scans, it says all scans will be conducted by principals, assistant principals, or individuals otherwise designated by the superintendent. I thought that occurred to me when I listened to last month's meeting, was, would that be something the school nurse would have access to? Because she is often the person that gets a student taken and said, could, she often does it subtly and, in a non-acusatory fashion, but it's sometimes...
There would always be an administrator there. Even now, when we suspect somebody that has a, has a concern, there's always an administrator there. So I think the answer to your question would be no. But again, if, if, if the nurse is the only one in a building and everybody else is out, there is that possibility, that's why it's written that way, but ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, the answer is no, it would be by an administrator.
Okay.
The one thing that, that struck me in reading, um, provisions, was the fact that if contraband or weapon was confiscated, it would be discarded after three business days. And I know they, um, they would have let the parent know that this was happening, but just for concern that it's a family heirloom or, or their grandfather's pocket knife, anything like that, could it be stated that after, um, discarded after, three, three days after the parent was notified, so that if they didn't get ahold of the parent the next day or the day after, that they could at least have the parent know that it was happening?
Mm-hmm.
I, I, that struck me.
The paragraph, or the, the sentence after it does say, "If an item is confiscated from a student, his or her parent guardian will be notified."
They would be notified, but all, knowing this school, that sometimes the parents aren't immediately notified of things, so it's just been a history here that's, if they, like, say they send a letter home that your son was found with a weapon in school, it takes a while to get there, and in three days, maybe the parent doesn't have time to respond. Will the parent be notified that?
If, if something like that was ever found, and correct me if I'm wrong, J.C. and Matt, I don't think there's ever a parent that wouldn't know, I mean, wouldn't know about it in three days if something as serious of, of a weapon or contraband, something was found.
It's important to me to communicate with parents about every issue, so I, I made phone calls, so today I called one parent three times, and I should just follow, something serious that we would confiscate, they would get a call back.
I'm on the same lines, but I mean, I still have an heirloom lighter on my desk that I promised a student when he graduates, reads his GED, I can get it, so, um, if we run into those situations, it's case by case.
Thank you. Well, I would like to follow up on that because I know in the past, long before most people here were in school, uh, we had a student who brought a jackknife, pocket knife to cut her apple at lunch. She didn't hide it, it was something she carried, her family carried, blah, blah, blah. Right now, this policy says that that would be taken away and discarded, and there's no provision in here for the parent to come in and reclaim it, for the student to reclaim it and take it home and not bring it again. I guess, I think that I don't think it should be discarded if it's not an illegal item, if it's just something not appropriate for school, but, I mean, obviously, if it's somebody's snuff box or cares, I mean, box of snuff, if the box, box itself is precious, then that's a different story, but, um, I, I wasn't comfortable with that discarded word in there. And I fear for J.C., now is J.C. in trouble because he didn't discard that?
That's why I said, help me my big mouth.
Well, this is just your revision, it's not the policy, it's your own. But that's what I wondered, so now J.C.'s in trouble because he, he did the kid a favor. That, that would be a very motivi, motivating thing for a kid, and I hope he does come back, whatever it is, to get it.
He's in trouble right now.
So I, I, I think that discarded word should be rethought.
I could end it at, "The items will be confiscated," and not even go there. And it just gives, it gives us...
The option.
The, the option to do that, so if I could, if I eliminate it and discard it after three business days.
And if I have the right to discard it after so many months?
I don't, you probably don't even need to say anything, it'll just be confiscated. Whether we turn it to you or not is up to the discretion of the administrator.
That seems more reasonable to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think we'll have to push this one out a month, right? There's quite a few changes that you're looking at making there.
Okay. I can get that to you.
Just kind of write it the way it should look when we put it in the book.
Sure, we can do that to you. I'll get to that to you by the end of the week.
Um, for 62 and 63 there, was there any other thoughts?
Uh, the, the one about the naming?
Yeah, naming of therapy dogs.
I discussed with Tim the issues that came up for the naming ones, and...
The plaque, you mean, for so...
Yeah, 63 there, thirty-two, eighty-three.
Do you want to be on dogs or...
Either one.
It was, it was the thing that you brought up about the memorial cement, sorry for confusing you. I agreed with you... I agreed with you that it was kind of weird to have a memorial and then not name it after someone. And I liked your idea that, like, Callan Courts definitely had something to do with Mr. Callan and the baseball field with Mr. Gilbert. And in a small community like ours, I think those memorials are precious, just like the bench in the memorial garden, what's left of that memorial garden, and the sun dial, those were precious to the families who donated them. And it just seemed like to say we can't name them and they can't be permanent is kind of weird.
So I think we've got, we struck the permanent sentence. Is that accurate?
Yes, it says larger memorials or structures, if permanent and depending on the situation, may need prior board approval, so.
Okay.
We struck that. And then further down there in the red above grandfather, and it says they, you know, all of these things may be named for their educational purpose or shall be named for individuals with significant impact. So I think we've adjusted our policy so that...
Oh, maintenance. Says that maintenance is up to the people who donated it. Now, in the instance of the outdoor classroom, say, we did have a problem that the groundskeepers did not want to maintain the property around the classroom. And that kind of thing is unheard of as far as I'm concerned. So I'm not sure how that would pertain to maintenance by, you know, would they have to come and mow the lawn every week? Are, are, are we just saying that the structure itself is what has to be maintained by the most people or the property on which it stands also?
I, I guess to me, maybe putting that sentence in there at least gives people that make donations, you know, the thought that there may, it may need to be revisited in five or 10 years, certainly not mowing lawn, anything like that.
It's probably more applicable to what's going on with Mr. Callan's plaque right now, with some...
Okay.
Re-establishing that, that, "Take care of me, officer," what's going on?
I don't know that there's any recourse in the part of the school of 10 years after somebody's donated something to us and it's in dilapidated condition. And we've, and we ask them to update that, and they say no.
Then you take it down?
I guess, right? I mean, what are you going to do? Certainly, we want to be sensitive, depending on, on what it is we're talking about, but...
You also got to maintain a safe facility, you know, if it was put up and not kept in order, you know, it should, it was put up because of that something.
I, I think having that in there, you know, when John is talking with a person, allows him the opportunity to say, there may be need for updating five or 10 years. We'd like for you to keep that in mind also.
Right. And really, our insurance company is, is saying that any memorial's dedication should not have any cost to the district. Because you will, over the years, have many come to you, and, and we do right now, but it can't be a burden as far as the district goes financially. So that's, that's really why this is in there. But, you know, normal groundskeep, I mean, that stuff, I mean, we, I mean, we, we do.
Okay, so how does that pertain to the plaques that are hanging on the wall over there that were all donated by people? And, and each year you have to update them. I mean, how does that pertain to that type of thing? That's upkeep.
Which plaques are donated?
Yeah, the named plaques on the walls up in the hall. They're named after people.
And what are we doing? What's the school doing to them now?
Each year they put in a student's name on, you know, one of those little...
Are they given in awards?
I think, I think those are, I was going to say, I think that's more so of an award, you know, of a student of the year, or teacher of the year, or something like that. I don't think that's a memorial that's recognizing students if, if I grasp the plaques that she's talking about.
And, and I'd say probably whenever we're accepting anything, that's some of what we would consider before we accept it is, what's the burden that's going to be placed in the district? Is it reasonable or not?
Okay.
Anything else on that? For therapy?
That's an improved version.
What's that?
I think this is an improved version.
Okay. For therapy dogs, any thoughts on that?
I guess with the therapy dog, man, I like the idea of having them in the building. I think they will be beneficial to some kids. I mean, I just, you know, the part where it has to be under the owner's care at all times, I mean...
A kennel, right?
The dog will be in that person's classroom or office or...
Yeah, they're, they're, they're going to have to be in charge of, you know, they're going to have to be in charge of their dog. And, and, and like I said, in the rare instance that something happens where they can't be, they're going to have to have a procedure in place in which whether they're boxed, you know, I don't know what's the proper term.
Kennel dog, yes.
Yeah, just throw them, throw them in a box and, you know, and whatever.
No duct tape, right?
Not putting them in a box.
Your cage, right.
My purpose of this was just to not to be able to chain it to somebody's desk and say, here, take care of my dog for the day.
Right.
Or hang it on to somebody's hand.
Right.
Can I just ask you, when, when Paula has her dog, is the dog always with Paula or does the dog go to other people's rooms for...
The only time the dog has ever been out of Paula's sight was when she had Penny with a student and she went across the hall to the bathroom. But she's always with Penny.
Okay.
Or if Penny needs a break, she typically puts Penny in her car so that Penny's not even in our building at that point.
That's, the only thing I wondered is, in this case, the speech therapist has the therapy dog. And I wondered if the therapy dog was ever used by one of the counselors or an administrator to help calm a student down or whatever, in which case the speech therapist might not be the one operating it all, so.
Right, yes. No, anytime I've utilized Paula with her dog in a crisis situation, she has stayed in the office. She kind of removes herself to the side, but it's just the confidentiality piece of sometimes that's how that works because I don't have a therapy dog and our counselors don't have a therapy dog.
But you use the therapy dog.
We've used them with her supervision, yes.
So would we be having therapy dogs like on a daily basis? Or would it be like a special day?
I don't know. Currently, right now, we don't have them in, within the district until the board comes up with a policy, and then they're going to have to follow the policy, so.
I mean, I know when this was a couple of years ago, we were just worried that, you know, high-end personnel, you know, are, are getting paid to have the dog and, and then they're not able to do their job because the dog has to go into a classroom, you know, or, or something getting pulled away from. I mean, what are the safeguards on that, I guess? Like I said, I really like the idea. I just don't, I don't know, I don't know how, what are your, I mean, what are your thoughts on?
I'll be honest with you. I think this policy is so restrictive that I would be surprised if someone wanted to jump through A through J and A through G and give us all that information to have one in here. I, I'll be honest with you.
No, I agree.
But again, that's, that's something, that's a bridge that we'll cross. You know, if, if someone wants to do that and they prove that, then...
And then in the end, like, you're supervising the, you know, right? Whoever has this dog, if they're not doing the job.
Correct, right. Then it becomes...
It's more important for them to do their job than to have the dog.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. I'm good with that, huh?
Any other questions on that policy?
I know what I was going to bring up on the, on the memorials, considering the fact that Dan Gilbert's scoreboard is up there. I would not imagine that every time that something broke on that, that they would have to pay the cost on. It belongs to the school now, so is that something you've considered?
But that, if, if you take a look at the scoreboard, that is something that we actually use. So the, the district would upkeep that, you know, I mean, if a light goes out or some, I mean, yes.
Could I ask a clarifying question then? Was the scoreboard a gift to the school, so therefore the school not owning?
The funds were a gift to the school to buy the scoreboard, so yeah.
It isn't a plaque or memorial anymore, is it?
It's, no, it's a donation, it was a donation.
Yeah.
Kind of like what you see that's before you coming up, yes.
So then, I, I just want to clarify, so then are we right in thinking that then the cost of maintenance of memorials wouldn't apply to the scoreboard because the donation was made to pay for it? Then the school purchased its, not the schools?
And I would also think that even if that wasn't the case, where someone wanted to put a scoreboard up that we use every spring season or every fall season, because we are actually using it, that we would have the upkeep to it, absolutely.
Okay.
Hopefully, we're done.
Just one more thing on J. Since you said, well, sorry, if A through, you just said if someone's willing to, if this policy is so restrictive that if someone jumps through the A through I or J, blah, blah. So the elephant in the room is the last time that we had a potential therapy dog, one was the CSE chair's dog and one was the assistant principal's dog. So it seems to me that neither one of those people are in the position always of utilizing the therapy dog, but maybe someone else could. Because there were situations where a teacher took the dog and it seemed to be used to good effect in that classroom. So J then seems to negate that unless we're going to let that sort of situation come under rare instances.
The concerns that are, the concerns that I have personally is who is responsible if something happens while this therapy dog is in the school? It bites a student's hand, it bites a teacher's ankles. We can't, the district should not be held responsible for that. And that was the one concern that our insurance company had. And again, there's different levels of therapy dogs. I know they're all been trained, but really, they're the responsibility of, of the owner of the dog. So I have a hard time letting a teacher grab somebody else's therapy dog to take to class. So, you know, that's why I think Mrs. Gaylord said that, you know, the handler is always in the room, very close in supervision if we're actually using it for what it's intended to, to be used for.
And quite honestly, Paula's probably brought her dog three times this school year prior to this happening discussion. She's very deliberate and very purposeful on what the lesson is being used and how Penny will enhance the interactions for the student that she's working with that day. So that's not something she's bringing her dog every day for therapy sessions. She's very deliberate on when and why and what that is going to help practice or help that student practice.
So it's not just a hang around?
No, never. Penny is never here just visiting. She's always here for a purpose.
I, did I misread it? I thought that there was something in here that it had to be certified by some organization. Did you take that out or it doesn't?
No, it's...
Imagine that?
Let's just...
Nope.
It's in the second to last paragraph on the second page.
Yep.
Oh, okay. Shoot. Okay.
Okay, so we're good with those two policies as written? Is that accurate to say? Okay. Why don't we, so the searches and interrogations, I think we're going to push that out a month. John will make the recommended changes and email it out to us and try to settle on that next month. Through consent agendas we did last month, that can we approve policies eighty-five hundred and thirty-two, eighty-three as written? That'll be my recommended action and motions. That sound okay, John? Okay. Have a motion for, for that?
Someone?
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes. Okay. Superintendent report.
Just a couple of quick announcements. Next month, I've invited Jeff Schlagenhoff and his Lady Hornets to come to the board meeting so we can celebrate their great ride as sectional five champs and being moved on to the Far West Regionals. I just want to thank him for coaching those girls and the hard work those girls put in. They really put us on the map and it was great to, great to be a part of it. And just the enthusiasm and the excitement that the school community had and having, you know, an extra bus to go out with all the kids, it was just, it was just phenomenal. So I mentioned to him that, that we'd like to at least have the girls come and say hello to us and introduce themselves to us and that we would, you know, congratulate them on their, on their awesome season. I will be attending the Guys and Dolls Drama Club presentation on Friday. This, you know, this weekend is, is obviously their musical. The dates for that is Friday and Saturday at seven and Sunday at two. Tickets are eight dollars for adults and six dollars for students. So that should be an exciting weekend for, for those students, so I'll, I'll be there Friday night. As you are aware, I mentioned to you, we did have a massive lockdown drill here last Friday here at the middle high school, which lasted a little over an hour. The reason being is with our SRO, myself, Matt, not having had been a part of one here yet, we wanted to test every nook and cranny and dot our i's and cross our t's. So Officer Wilson had about eight or 10 additional officers come and we just really canvassed the area. We went so far as to pull the fire alarms and knock on doors and say we were the sheriffs to see if anybody was coming to the door. So we gave it the full gamut and we debriefed yesterday in regards to, you know, some of the holes and things that we, that we need to tighten up on. But overall, I think it went very well. The kids have been, some of the student body has already been spoken to. I know J.C. and, and Matt have spoken to at least the seventh and eighth graders so far and their thoughts. And really, it was, it was a positive, you know, for the most part, positive from the staff as well. I think anxiety kicked in because if they were used to 10 or 15 minutes of a lockdown and, okay, you're released, they were there for over an hour. So I think it started to probably feel like something was actually happening. And unfortunately, social media plays a role in it. There's nothing we can do about it. We did field some phone calls at district office and I fielded some personal phone calls, but overall, it was more so just a sense of, you know, people driving by and seeing 10 police cars here and, you know, throwing it out there. And again, kids with social media, you know, get it out there and certainly, you know, there's anxiety there, but it's something that, you know, we need to do. So I want to thank Deputy Wilson for gathering his troops to assist us. We had two working dogs that were through the buildings and again, all, all went well. And then we quickly went over to Lynn's building and that was not an hour long, but just, you know, a quick, quick canvas of the area and went into some classrooms, the younger classrooms, and introduced them to the police and...
They were asked to chase out the leprechauns that day by our littles.
Yes.
These officers, that was their big focus.
Yeah, but, right. But all in all, we intend to do one of those big drills every single year. So I'd like to say that the second drill that we do need to have won't be certainly as long as extensive, but, you know, we certainly wanted to make sure we, you know, checked all angles and we had the help. So, you know, that's something that we're committed to is, is providing safety for staff and students here. And about two hours ago, the administrative team had a meeting with the fifth grade parents to, and, you know, kind of opened it up to have a meeting with the fifth grade parents in regards to transitioning the sixth graders over here next year to create a middle school model. And it was lightly attended and it went fantastic. We are going to share with you the PowerPoints that we shared with the parents and the kids that were there. And basically rolled out our philosophies and our expectations. And certainly, we will, you know, post it on our website, you know, tweet it out, we'll, we'll do all that stuff so parents that weren't able to come could see... do all that stuff so parents that weren't able to come could see what we presented to, to the parents, but it was very well received and I think, you know, it's, it's going to really be a good thing for the district to, to have that model over here and it's going to really help us increase student achievement.
And I did share that just before the meeting, so they have it whenever they have a chance to take a look at it.
Okay, so you may not understand the first slide because JC was, no, I'm joking. JC had a story to go along with it, but... Yeah, but you'll probably get the point if you, if you take a look at it, but, and that's all I have.
On my way in to the meeting, I was stopped by a parent just coming out of that meeting and I had to stay there and listen to them express, it was a set of parents express their concerns, so do you feel like you could reassure them enough or that you have plans in place to keep the younger kids completely separate from the older kids?
Yes, yes, we, we explained all that to them, we even gave them a roadmap of where they would be housed, where their electives would be if they had to leave that wing. We didn't receive any sort of concerns at all, I mean, it was more so about, you know, the programs and what does the schedule going to look like and, you know, all of those things, but, you know, we, I believe everybody left there, you know, happy.
I also found a parent on the way in and...
On the way in or out?
On the way, I was in, on the way in and they were on their way out. And she just mentioned that as long as the kids get the services that they need, that they're all fine with that. Didn't seem to be much of an upset in the auditorium, so.
Oh, the parent, that's another thing, you reminded, the parent asked, will there be math help commensurate with the excellent math help that Mary Kalinowski supplies in the elementary school?
We explained to the sixth grade parents that they will have 83 minutes, so really their schedule isn't going to change from the elementary. One of the things in the middle school schedule that we have is an academic support period where daily for 40 minutes, all of the kids go back to their team of teachers and that is an instructional period, it's not a graded period, but instructional period where they get academic support, absolutely, yep.
Is that, does that academic support period, is that going to be also where students take chorus or band? You're good.
Nope.
How many people, how many?
How many? Twelve?
Twelve? Now, was that what time?
Five o'clock.
One more here with these kids.
Are there any plans to have an additional meeting, maybe later in the evening so people get off to work?
Weekend, that was one of the comments that we had, weekend.
Any other questions for John? Okay, Nicole?
The only thing I have for you is I attended the 2019 Leadership Group at ASBO last week, last Sunday and Monday, we all went to Albany. It is our Association of School Business Officials, they're chapter leaders, basically the Genesee Valley Chapter is the one that I belong to, and I was asked to go to that with the Vice President of our chapter, so I went and we met with officials in the government, we talked about the budget and the pros and the cons of the things that the governor was discussing about being passed, and it was very good for me to hear and meet a lot of the people. Shelley Mayer, the State Department Chair on the Senate, she is really fighting for schools, so it was nice to hear somebody who, who really has her feet on the ground with that, so I learned a lot and one of the main things that we discussed was, is the budget going to be on time and there are very strong reasons to believe that the budget will be passed before April 1st, so, so that's good.
At the last board meeting, Nicole, you said that you were going to meet with the representative from the Stamp project?
I did, yes.
Did you do that, how did that go?
Um, good, there's still...
Who did you meet with?
Mark Massey, yeah. So, and then I also attended the luncheon for their annual, just because I feel like we should be more boisterous as the district that they're in, and so basically that's what the meeting was about, like you have not come to see us, we have no idea what's going on, like what are you doing and how can you help us? And he had discussed coming here and giving a presentation to the board, so, did you?
I asked, yeah.
Yeah, so if that's something you all want, there are no new potential people coming in. They do have people probably, the way he described it to us, they have them a lot, but they don't, we're not, nobody's allowed to know who they are, they come here, they stay here for months, they do things on the site and we just don't know about it until after potentially they're gone, so.
So I'm not sure what he could say to us other than they're very enthusiastic and hopeful if they were to come in and present to us, so I'd, I'd respond to John and say if they're not able to provide us with that information.
No, no, correct. And so he and I discussed having quarterly meetings just to make sure we know where they're at and then I can report out to you all.
You said that, I think, I remember you saying at the last meeting that it worked out roughly to be $25, the four, the 2.4 plus million dollars that were taken off the tax rolls?
Yes.
By the acquisition of the Stamp Land. Must have to be about $25 per taxpayer?
Per 100,000, no.
Per 100,000, yes, yes. So what's, what rough figure is that total?
Well, it's, it's pretty similar to what we're proposing for a tax increase, so 1% is what you're proposing.
Right.
5.2 million.
Correct.
So it's pretty close to what one year's tax increase would be on our district if that hadn't occurred.
Right.
It would be a year or maybe...
So it took that much money off, off the rolls and whatever that is, it spread it out over the remainder of, of the people that pay taxes.
Yeah, I just wondered what the aggregate was, the whole amount?
I don't have my calculator, but I can give you an exact figure when I get it.
I don't know how many 100,000s are already...
Okay.
In your, so, for the budget transfer, I wonder, we've got a consent agenda in our new business, I wonder if you want to say a couple of words about that now?
Yes, so, looking at the budget transfer, we haven't had any board approved budget transfers this entire year, so I went through our lines and I looked to see where we had overspent, where we had underspent. So some of the issues are with the, the operations intermunicipal, that's what we're going to be paying the SRO out of. And a debit just means we're going to increase that budget line and a credit just means we're going to decrease that other budget line. So the other thing that we had is a lot of different special ed situations that had happened and so I'm transferring a lot into our 2250-490 code because we had a student move in for that. So then the rest is kind of just cleanup to the positions for K through three, sometimes they're not charged exactly to the correct code, or I'm sharing some of those salaries with the federal fund, which is any of our 611 grant, Title I grant, and on occasion those are, are not in the correct lines, so I have swapped the, the budget money out because we're just estimating who we think might go under those grants when we do the estimations.
Lauren, back to your question there, I, I think it's also something I'm interested to know, I think $52,000, so if I understand correctly, 5.3 million dollars is the proposed tax levy, you're suggesting it'll be $21 to $23 per 100,000 and that would raise $52,000, so 25 is the number that you threw out there, so I think in the neighborhood of 50, $52,000 or above that would maybe be the tax revenue that needed to be replaced, if my understanding of all that is correct.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions for Nicole?
Architecture services?
What's that?
Architecture services, I was at the last meeting, did you discuss that last?
We did not discuss that at the last meeting, so we did an RFP for architectural services and as you are all aware, we had some speed bumps with the capital project and the architectural and engineering designs that we had in the last project. And part of it was, had something to do with that project being shared between two districts and there was nobody in my position, there was nobody in Jordan's position for three and a half months when we got here, maybe four, so it would have went better if we could have reviewed the, the documents that they had done. You guys were at a vital point when we came in, you were just opening bids for the remainder of the project, so there was a lot of things that we learned on that project and I think when Mike Crum and I were here, we discussed that and we need to have a capital project on the books very soon, and so we are planning for that. And planning for that is our current architect, the people we want to work with going forward. So I had that conversation with Jordan, we, we set up an RFP, we got five back, two of them were not very interested in the first place, so we kind of didn't even call them back in, three people we had in, we had a bunch of questions for them, we fired them at them, so it basically came down to cost and what we feel the service is going to be. So they're not the lowest price, but I feel like we will get the level of service that we need out of them and then we will also won't get mileage to death out of them, like every time they have to come out here, they're not going to check bill us mileage in there, they're not going to take some of the other fees that we had seen before, so we are asking for approval to move on from our current architect.
So what types of things are we looking for in a capital project?
Well, so that's part of the next step, we're going to, we're going to, I'm, we're going to, yeah, so once we approve them, we get a contract on board, we're going to have, I'm going to have them come in and be a part of the, the people with the process to help us, like they're going to help us set up a committee, we have to get our, our building condition survey done and start moving forward with that, so.
Why do you think we need a capital project?
Well, so that tax cap that I pulled up for you, once our debt falls off of that, it'll go back to being a negative tax cap, so we don't want that to happen. We, we always want to make sure we're in line, we keep that level and as flat as we possibly can. But the other thing is we need to maintain our facilities, we know for certain some things that we need, we need all new windows in the middle high school, 100%, all new windows, so that alone is a good chunk of money, are also our athletic fields, our tennis court, our track, we already know those, they said they would have had another three years on them last year when we had them resurfaced. So we just need to make sure we're planning and preparing so we don't have an emergency project every year. So for the past three years I've been here, two of the three years we've had emergency projects where, oh my God, if we don't do this, we can't go on having school.
And our building condition survey is...
Building condition survey will help with that.
Yes, next year.
We can start having that done in July, I think, so building condition surveys reimbursed through the state every five years for school districts and that allows somebody independent to come and look at the district and tell you that you need X, Y, Z. Well, we also know that, that elementary school is going to need a new kitchen, that is probably original to building down there. So, so we know a bunch of these things, but we need them to help prioritize that list for us and whoever is on that capital project committee.
So, we basically have to stay in debt all the time in order to keep...
We don't have to, at some point when Stamp goes through, we're going to, we're going to time it really, really correct, so when Stamp goes through and we have a big pilot, we're going to come off the debt situation.
I could tell you in talking to Mark Massey, did he stand like this and go, like that? Get the vision, did he, did he?
Is there something wrong with having a vision?
No.
Because that's my plan, it's not a vision, it's a well-thought-out plan, that tax cap has to be looked at over the years, otherwise you're going to be in hot water when it comes time to go out to raise taxes when you actually need to do it. So that's part of, you know, why I'm here, because I plan for that stuff.
So, I just want to know, so what, did I understand you correctly to say that we can't let our debt fall down to nothing?
We don't want to let our debt fall down to nothing.
So you always want to be in debt, always?
But we, well, so we're already in debt to, what is it, $2 million, so we, we want to be consistent and have nice facilities, not too nice facilities, but nice facilities that serve a purpose, and we can't do that if we never have a capital project and don't go, and don't stay consistent with where we're at.
Okay.
So the short answer is yes.
Right.
If we had a money tree that we could pay for it, yes, that would be fantastic.
So I just want to understand what you're saying.
But we do get building aid on it too, so that's that other part, it's just the in-between that's the net cost to the taxpayer. Good question.
I'll ask you the political question, see if we get in trouble. When the state turned over to the Democrats in the Senate Assembly and then of course with Cuomo, there was a lot of concern, a lot of articles that we could click on that said non-New York City school districts were going to face budgeting issues and shortfalls in aid, is there any evidence that we're seeing that, I realize the budget is yet to come?
So you, if you follow any of the political stuff about school aid, you will see this phase-in foundation aid situation happening where the New York City districts have not been fully phased in for, for what aid they should be getting based on their per pupil. So if they ever fully phase in foundation aid, we, we actually wouldn't be in trouble, but that's based on per pupil, so we're living in the thousand, the thousand per pupil foundation aid scenario right now, so we'd have to really seriously start to think and be creative with what we're doing. So, no, we're not, we aren't facing that right now at this point, but at some point in the future, could we be? Yes, if they started to say there was no hold harmless and we're going back to doing whatever your, your kid counts are and, and that data, I mean, we, we could at some point.
What do you mean, they wouldn't give us $1,000 per pupil anymore?
No, what I mean is they wouldn't, they would look at us and say now, in 2006 you had, you had 1,000 students and now you have 800 students, we're going to give you aid on the 800, not the 1,000. So that's why you have to be creative and resourceful and work as hard as you can to keep what you got and be involved in like the NISCUS when they go down and, and talk to the officials and in ASBO and make sure they understand that how, how much it would hurt our district and what, what these things would do to us. And the Amazon deal falling through did not help Cuomo as a Democrat, by the way.
Well, we'll get ourselves in trouble if we stay down there, so, any other questions? Okay, moving on to new business, so we've got this as a consent agenda of A2 through A8, be resolved items A2 through A8 be approved via consent agenda. Have a motion? Is there anything in that group that anybody wants pulled out of there? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Communications? I don't think there's too much right here, just what we have, okay. Discussion roundtable? Nobody forwarded any concerns, are there any concerns that have popped up recently?
The veterans exemption, could you get us some numbers on that so we can discuss that? I have it written out and I can, I can do that.
Anybody else?
Just a question, I guess, or a follow-up, with regard to that annual, I don't know, call it crisis training or what would you call it, annual reaction training?
Safe, Safe School Seminar, what's coming, is it?
No, no, what we just had.
Oh.
The drill.
It was just a lockdown drill.
Lockdown drill.
We're recorded to do four a year.
Do you plan on doing any desktop exercises?
We certainly can, now that we have Deputy Wilson here, we've done a couple of desktop exercises, roundtables in my previous district, so that is something moving forward that we can do, absolutely.
And between now and next year's annual drill, do we plan on providing, I don't want to call it training, but basically that's what it is, to our students as far as how, how they should respond and, and what they should do and to get them more acclimated to the...
Part of, part of what we're doing actually...
Part of, part of what we're doing actually this week is we're meeting with the middle school, high school students to get their reactions. Number one, why we do these drills. And number two, I mean, if you want to elaborate a little bit on just?
We had all the stuff, and eight teachers come in the cafeteria and what we did is we used it as an opportunity to explain to them why we did that drill and why it took so long. And what I wanted to celebrate to them, one of the kids had said, well, why so many sheriffs? And the answer is, although Officer Wilson is in our building every day, a lot of these sheriffs have never been in our building. And in the event we need them to commit, we want to have access and familiarity with what we have. And kids spent the next 15, 20 minutes just asking questions, what do I do if I'm in the bathroom? What do I do if the doors are locked? And to me, that was a really valuable experience just to educate them on what we expect from them. The answer is they're not always gonna know. And the goal is to have them respond exactly the same way if there were no adults. So I think that, that Q and A session after the lockdown was invaluable and we plan to do that with other grades as well, couldn't even today.
Okay, that's more, more comfortable they are in responding to a situation, the better the drill's gonna go and the reality will go.
Right, and we try to explain to them, you know, they were nervous because it was a long drill, that's okay. Unfortunately, that's the day and age we're in. They were nervous and uncomfortable, they didn't feel routine, and I thought that was a valuable experience.
The other thing I was wondering, in like spring, spring is coming, is there any possibility to, I know we've explored this in the past, but it never panned out, maybe take another look at it, but maybe have some outdoor seating for our kids in the cafeteria? You know, like a table with an umbrella where they can go out on a nice day and have lunch outside instead of always inside or, you know, or picnic table right on the outside of the cafeteria there. Just something I, I'll just, I like said, we looked at it before and just never materialized. I don't know, maybe we can make it happen again or not. The other two, I was wondering, I went, I was going through the notes when Mike Crum was here, and there, there was something about a solar presentation. But I don't know if we, I don't remember any kind of follow-up with that. And I, I don't know if anybody else remembers that?
Yeah, it was a salesman that stopped in and he, he sent him away. That was it.
Why did he send him away?
He stopped in without an appointment, which really surprises me that, you know, salesmen are able to get through the doors and make their way to the superintendent without an appointment. That, that was it. The salesman stopped in about a solar opportunity and sent him away.
Is that the same one that emailed everybody?
Probably, yeah.
And he didn't come back and make that an appointment?
I don't think there was any follow-up.
Couldn't have been too serious though?
I don't know, it was a cold call. I, I was surprised that, I was surprised that a salesperson could get to the superintendent's office unannounced. Does that happen often?
I pride myself on my doors always open, so maybe I shouldn't.
For the right people.
Yeah, right.
Make, make an appointment, I would say.
Yeah, that's usually the procedure to go by, but I, I haven't heard a word.
That's all I've got for right now.
Okay. Job for Chris, bye. Okay, subcommittee reports, did anything occur committee-wise?
Not at the store.
Enough of the code of conduct, safety, nothing. Okay. Okay, moving on, appointments and reinstatements be resolved with the following, appointments or reinstatements be approved? Have a motion?
It's only the one, right?
Yep. Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passes? No executive session, is that accurate?
I have nothing.
Okay, we're on to, go ahead.
Did you do all the discussion or is there any discussion of this job description for curriculum instruction and assessment? Wasn't that on the last?
We talked about that last time, yes. Did you have any questions about it?
I could, how, who does all of these jobs now?
Right now, it's very much piecemealed together. And to be honest, that is the reason we need someone in that position because, you know, it's, it's hard on the principals and the assistants to be the, you know, the instructional leaders in their building, but also being the managerial leaders in their building. There's, there's a, there's a lot that needs to be aligned. And again, you know, the board's goal is to increase student achievement and we need someone to oversee the curriculum. We met today with the GVEP people in regards to extensive professional development for the teachers, because they're gonna need all the support they can, they can get. And so we're devising plans for in-house professional development. The school calendar reflects that next year with a couple superintendent conference days.
They need all the support they can get in a new and different way than last year?
Well, we're, we're gonna really strip, strip, strip everybody down to take a look at what we're teaching, where we're teaching it, how we're teaching it. And, you know, it's nothing that the teachers are doing wrong, but really just the alignment of it all K-12. You know, if, if I asked, where's the K-12 curriculum in ELA? I bet you I can't find it. I can't get something from somebody, although the, you know, the teachers certainly know what they need to teach, but we need to have that collaboration plea piece, we need to have it funnel up through K-12. The next gen standards are coming up. I do not believe that we've taken a look at those standards. And so we're bringing some specialists in to work with our departments, K-12, to really, you know?
Do you think that this position needs to be a full-time position? Because I guess I'm questioning or wondering, I know that Mike Crum was strong in this position, but I know that we have done this K-12 curriculum alignment multiple times under Barb Smith, under Sandy Morris, under Carrie Green, under, there's someone else in between there? We put that quite a bit. The real short-term one and then the last one? We've done it. And then under Michelle Myers, I think did some, Bill Bostwick did some. So I'm wondering, are there not in your office, did you not inherit some big binders full of K-12 curriculum alignments?
Well, let me put it to you this way. We are, we are aligning our departments, our teachers, and we have gaps. Do I know where they are right now within the two months? No. But if you take a look at our graduation rates, you take a look at our student achievement results, they're not good. So we need to figure out what the, what the cause is, where those gaps are. And I think we have pockets of professional development happening. I see a lot of people going to professional development, but it's very individual. And, you know, I think for the most part, there's the writing and the reading curriculum down at the elementary, but where is it, you know, where's the six through eight? Where's the nine through 12? Where's the six through 12? We have islands that are within the district where, you know, teachers are teaching just a specific subject. They don't have that collaboration piece because, you know, they're only teaching a certain grade level on a certain topic. And so what we're trying to do is get that collaboration and get people to understand where the kids are coming from and where they need to go. I don't think that has really been thoroughly brought to the district before.
Have you, I guess I question the need for this in light of the scary budget figures. I, I just, I want to discuss it, not argue one way or another. But it seemed to me like the high school, and I only know seven through 12 really well, that the new Common Core standards were what we were supposed to align to and that within departments, there's a continual ongoing discussion about what is taught and what prepares for the next one. Maybe that's only in math, but I, I thought that the social studies and the English departments were pretty collaborative in the same way. And science is pretty, at the high school level at least, very contained. Each one has a certain set of criteria they're supposed to meet. So I, I wonder if the departments can't utilize more, the department chairs, because that's going on already.
And a lot of this professional development isn't the curriculum writing. Like I said, I, I know the teachers know what they need to teach. A lot of it is also too, is best strategies for teaching. We talked about that today, of doing half sessions, that, you know, it's not like we're gonna strip everybody down and say, hey, let's rewrite the curriculum. It's already there. The professional development that we're trying to provide is what are the best strategies to reach students? How can we have student-centered lesson plans and activities within our building? Everybody has their different, you know, personalities and teaching styles, but, you know, we need a common language across the math curriculum from K through 12. The stuff that you were teaching in your math classroom and the way you were explaining it, are you using the same vocabulary terms as the sixth grade teacher or the fourth grade teacher or, you know, the geometry teacher?
Actually, to answer that question, I don't know if that was just rhetorical, but at least in the math department, we did, I don't, again, defer to the math chair here, because we, every month had those kind of meetings. And then several times a year, we met with elementary and middle school. So we made it a point, and I'm assuming they still are since you were the key. How do you say this? How do you describe this? What do you say when you factor? Okay, if you're gonna say it that way, I'm gonna say it that way too. So in light of the budgetary concerns, if within our departments we're already doing that, that seems like a more economical way to go. And somehow the administrative term supervising that more or, and my impression was that in the elementary school, they already have a pretty unified curriculum in ELA and math. So I just wondered if all of these things couldn't be either reduced to a part-time or acknowledgement that maybe some of these things already are doing, being done on a regular basis. And then back to our community, our tech committee, I'm hearing two different things. I feel like I have stereo, Rob in one ear and you in the other about individualized professional development is the latest and the greatest way to go. And then you're saying instead of individualized staff development, we should be having some cohesive, generalized? So that's two different administrators talking about two different things.
It's two different philosophies. Rob is going along the lines of creating, you know, these, these badges that teachers can earn as far as professional development goes and being able to use technology and go out and, you know, become efficient in certain aspects and I don't know how many badges.
Using the tools?
Using the tools.
Not so much content? My, my, my dealing is not the content, that's what your piece is.
Right.
More content, mine is more about the tools and pedagogy.
Right. And we're trying, we're trying to build master teachers. And curriculum needs to be reviewed every single year. I mean, it changes. It's changed since you've been out. And again, with these next gen standards, I could probably ask, you know, a handful of teachers, have you looked at them? Do you know what they are? Do you know what the changes are? And, you know, some teachers will say absolutely and others will say, hmm, I, you know, I heard about them, I, I don't really know. So we need to be very consistent within this district, K through 12, that everybody is getting the professional development they need to stay up on all of this. Again, we're utilizing, you know, GVEP and our services there to bring in, you know, these trainers and, and professional development. But, you know, we're talking about the state assessments, the state reporting, all of that. And if you take a look at each individual piece, it seems to be all over the district on, well, who's reporting this? Who does this? Who's going to curriculum council? And we all kind of look at each other. And there, there's a lot to do, again, with the instructional piece and overseeing K through 12. Who's gonna be going into these department meetings? Who's going to be going into the team planning times and sitting down with these teachers to talk about pedagogy and all of that? You know, it's very hard to have, you know, the administrators piecemeal that and, and have it function effectively if we don't have someone concentrated and their sole purpose is to do that.
To whom would this person, this position report?
To me.
So would this person or position be in a chain of command on the level with the principals?
Yes, they would be part of the administrative bargaining unit. But they would be an administrator so they could help, obviously we want them in the classrooms, we want them doing observations.
So you don't, you haven't talked to the, or have you talked to, I guess I don't want to ask questions like that. Have you talked to the department chairs yet? Do they see the need for this to help them along with coordinating and aligning the curriculum in their own departments or?
I have not personally talked to the department chairs. But I can't imagine it not being a welcomed addition because, you know, my whole idea being here is, is again, raising student achievement and making sure that we collaborate and that we get the support that we need moving forward. Because, you know, the, the results somehow aren't, aren't, aren't working. And, you know, whether that's a curriculum piece, whether that's a program piece, that's what we need the assistance in.
So things have gotten much more dire than when we interviewed you?
No. But I've been here for two months and watching and learning and seeing who does what and what has occurred and what is occurring. This is the right move.
I think, you know, graduation rate, so when we do our retreat this summer and we talk about your goals, if graduation rate isn't the number one goal, it's gonna be in the top three. So obviously you just came out of the, the school and I'm, I'm not nearly in the weeds as, as you've been for so many years. We talk about the collaboration and that's great within departments and I can't speak to specifically what those conversations are. But one of the interesting things when we went through this interview process was the studying that each of these candidates did. And Kathy, while not the best person for the job, I thought did a really nice job of studying our student performance data. And I think we all saw graduation rate, you know, amongst our peers is below average. So I don't know that I know how to improve that number. But as I say, if it's not the number one goal that we established for John, it, it better be in the top three and.
I agree with you. I think it should be, increasing the graduation rate should be a really important goal. In light of, I guess what I'm really concerned with in light of these dire financial predictions.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say dire financial predictions. We are just reallocating the elementary assistant principal in this position. So this is not a, this is, while this is a new position, I would like to say we're just realigning our resources. This is no cost to the district. This isn't an additional.
I guess I want to spend our limited resources in the best way possible and pass, I asked this question of Mike Crum too, how he envisioned this position being, because he was a strong advocate for it. So I knew he would be, continue to be a strong advocate for it. I'm wondering, I guess I would prefer to see more evidence that this spending our resources here as opposed to in other areas would get us the most bang for the buck. And I just had, this is a curiosity question, what does number 28 mean? Coordinate the instructional areas with those of special education and finance. That was one that confused me on one of these duties. There's 31 duties listed, responsibilities, and some of them I could picture. There's 31 duties listed, responsibilities, and some of them I could picture. And some of them, I guess a lot of these seem like jobs that would be best done with administrative supervision if you guys have a vision for what needs to happen. But best done within the departments since they're the closest to the standards, the exams, the students, what hinders students, what makes students successful, how kids are reached and how they're left behind. So adding another layer of, it seems to me almost like adding another layer of complexity between our goal of increasing graduation rates and the kids who have to produce those rates and the teachers who have to produce those rates. So if these jobs all need to be done in a better way than they're being done now, I don't disagree that maybe some of these jobs need to be done in a better way than they are now. But I'm not sure that it's...
But if you take your own, if you take your own teaching experience and if you think about your department, let alone, you know, your individual courses that you teach, but your department and your colleagues, and to have someone on a daily, weekly basis come in and talk to you about curriculum and talk to you about this is what we're going to do and, hey, we're going to do quantitative formative assessments and how's it working and let's take a look at data. And you just gave a benchmark and let's sit down and let's, you know, let's look at the data. I mean, has that happened before? I don't believe so. And so to have someone in here to do that with all of the departments, K through 12, and to be able to be in those team meetings and be able to talk to you and be able to be a resource for you to say, hey, look at, and set up professional development for you as, you know, whatever you taught, along with, you know, a math department to go to. This is someone that is going to be just an invaluable resource to the district moving forward, you know, again.
I guess I question, number one, we have been talked to like that when I was teaching. Our most effective collaboration within the math department was when we got together and said, where are our gaps? Where do we need to fix them? I think, as I said, I don't know that putting another layer in between there, having effective administrators to come with that data and know how to use it correctly. Every single finalist for your position, including you, said, we don't want to use data to hammer people. Well, that would be indeed a new thing here at Oakville Middle, I think, at least at the middle high school. A constructive, educated use of data would be a good thing. It's just, I...
But it's, but...
I don't see, I don't know how the person that you just described could do that from pre-K through 12th grade effectively. So therefore, I wonder if we can accomplish this goal in a different way. Because we don't have a lot of chances to utilize this money or this method. I guess that's my issue. Increasing graduation rates is really important. And having a cohesive, appropriately-built curriculum is important in each area. But I don't see how this is going to do it. To me, this adds another layer in between the goal and who's going to accomplish the goal. And I don't understand how this person can be the expert you just described from pre-K up to 12th grade in every subject.
That's fine. I think we can move forward with, Lauren has reservations about this.
Well, I think it's something we should all be considering when we're delegating the money to it. So even though I might have some firsthand information with it, it's something we should all educate ourselves about.
Okay. Closing remarks. I think we kind of kicked it off already. Is there anything else, Lauren, along the lines of closing remarks?
Not that I think of at this moment.
Fine. Tim?
Oh, yeah. Have we looked at our subsituations as far as, we've talked about this a couple of different times in the past, about coming up with a better way or, not a better way, but better guidelines or policies for our substitute teachers. You know, one thing stands out in my mind is, you know, having recent graduates come in and fill in as subs in the high school. It seems like we need a little, maybe a little distance or space in between that little time. But there was a lot of other concerns about our subsituations, subpolicies. And I don't know if anybody's had time to dig into that or maybe that's on the back burner.
Well, there's no policy on subs. I do know that, you know, I know that that was a concern, that I know that when, you know, Lynn or J.C. or Matt or Jen interview for, you know, substitute teaching, we do take that into account. I think currently, right now, if they're two years out of graduation, but they're actually in an educational program, we do allow them at the high school. But we are made aware of, there's been some over the last, I think, probably a month or so, a couple of recent grads that we only allow them to sub at the elementary. The problem is, like every district around, we're short subs. So while you can be picky, we also need warm bodies. And, you know, I think more so, you know, for the high school, Matt and J.C. do a great job in talking to these substitutes about, you know, this is where you're going to work or we're going to have to put you or these are our expectations. But it is a concern because we do have, you know, these non-certified people that want to come in here and sub. And, you know, beggars can't be choosers. But we are cognizant of trying to get them, if they're recent graduates, only to work at the elementary, you know.
Even up to middle school would be better than in high school.
Right. You know, we're also looking into coaching. You know, the volunteer coaches starting to be a concern where kids are graduating here, wanting to come back to volunteer coach, but they're only one or two years away from, you know, being friends with them. And a lot of the times, they're here volunteering coaching and they are friends with the kids because they do know them and that's why they want to volunteer coach. We have concerns with that. So it's something that we're looking into, but...
Sometimes those kids are better than coaches, Lisa.
Anything else, Tim?
Oh, yeah. Recently, some students caught my ear regarding the library. Apparently, I don't know about it, so I have to, you know, defer to you guys. Apparently, recently or one time here, the library was kind of more user-friendly as far as, almost like a Barnes and Noble type situation there. And now they're telling me that that's gone away, that, you know, they can't have anything to snack on or drink in part of the library area. And they were just, you know, wondering if maybe that's something that could be reviewed again, I guess. I don't know much about it. But I think anytime that we can, you know, make it more, you know, a more friendly atmosphere, get kids in the library, I think that's good. As long as no damage or anything's going to occur by it, I don't see a problem with it. Last but not least, I was just wondering, any kind of update on the social worker or mental health specialist?
As I mentioned last meeting, we met, was it last week? I am looking for the district to host the Genesee County Mental Health, have a satellite office here at the end of the so-called middle school wing, beginning in September. There's a lot that needs to happen on their end. So I'm just really waiting. They know that we're in line and they seem very positive and supportive of the idea. They do have a couple satellites in other districts. And they definitely know that we're interested. And really, to no cost to the district, to have a satellite office here, I think is the best move. If for some reason that doesn't come to fruition, we'll certainly review the social worker aspect of it. But I think really that's the route to go because a satellite office could really serve the community more than just a social worker. To have an office there, to be able to, you know, connect with different services, to be able to have families come in here to the district to be serviced, to service our kids throughout the school day when we can. I think it'd be great to have an office here. So they know that we're interested and a lot needs to happen on their end as far as staffing. But I'm keeping my fingers crossed. I mentioned to Mr. Lamb last week, it looks very promising that that's going to happen, so.
Good. Other than that, that's it?
Jeff?
No, I'm good. I do know, just working on accounting, that there are some administrative changes going on at mental health. One of the ladies was retired after a long time, so maybe just stay on if you don't hear from them. Don't want it to fall through cracks because I think, like you said, I think it would be a good thing for the community.
Chris?
I volunteered on that email you sent out last week for the FFA program, Substates, that Kevin Meyer referred in this weekend. And I know that we've got one of our students running for District Nine president. And if she gets elected, a very good chance that we could be hosting that about next year. It was pretty impressive. A lot of good kids, showing a lot of great skills. And we got a lot of kids going to stage our FFA program. And it was just nice to see all that together and, you know, kind of see that program in action.
And I think there's both Oakfield and Elbow students competing, right, with Todd there?
Yeah, combined teams. I know this weekend, Elbow student at Millie Brewer won for parent speaking and for the president of District Nine, Julia Greenwich, they find out in April. Just because there was a series of casts and speeches and things like that that she had to compete in in order to get to that level. The judging takes a little while.
Cool, thanks. On Friday, I signed up for that NISP, evaluate the superintendent workshop, and they're going to go over that SuperEbel platform. If anybody else wanted to go, there's probably still room, but that one caught my eye, so I'll be doing that. I wonder, while we've got a captive audience, I know we're trying to set up our board retreat, I think, is it for July 22nd? I don't think we've heard from everybody yet. For those that we haven't heard from, can we get? Has it made me?
I put it on my calendar at home. I mean, in theory, it should...
Go full. Tim, July 22nd?
Yep, I already responded.
Okay. Was there anybody else? Was Lauren, did we hear from you?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. So are we good?
July 22nd, five to nine. Yes.
Book it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Already did.
Great.
Is it a nice hotel or is it just here?
It's just here.
You said book it. I got it.
I think that is it.
Did we reschedule the April meeting?
We did. I think it was April. Oh, no. For when you're going to be out of town.
Yes. I mentioned to the board that before I took this position and you offered it to me, our family had a vacation planned and our spring recess in my district does not line up with Oakfields. So I will be gone that week of the 22nd.
How is it the 16th or Tuesday?
And the week before is when you have break.
25th, is that where next schedule?
I believe, yeah, the 25th is...
You're out of town on the 25th?
Yes. Now, we did place a call into Jennifer Lewis over at GIVAP because that's the election and their budget vote. And I believe she said we could have it...
Anytime.
Before...
Or April 30th.
April 30th. I think I put that in my board minutes.
But I need the budget notice approved by the board by the time it's due, which is the 25th.
So you need our budget by the 25th?
No, I need, the property tax report card is a form that I have to fill out and has to go out with some of the budget stuff. It needs to be approved and submitted by the 25th.
When do you leave, John?
I'm leaving on the 20th. That's Saturday.
So there's no school?
There's no school that week before the 15th through the 19th, but I think the 19th is Good Friday. So I will be around the 15th, 16th, 17th, 18th.
Can we try to do the 16th?
Sure.
Okay.
Works for me.
Chris, is that dialing in?
Um, yeah, I'll try to do this again.
Bonnie, Lauren, is that okay?
What month are you in?
April 16th.
April 16th.
Listen, can I take it as Thursday?
Are you sure? 16th is a Tuesday. It is on mine.
Yep.
Chick, the calendar's blanking.
It is on mine too.
Oh, I'm in 18, sorry. I probably put all the dates in 2018 and we talked about the three. Okay.
Okay, I think we're booked for that though now. We're going to switch that to the 16th. Okay.
We can't do it the 9th instead? Or is that too soon? Because that's during the week of school vacation. So some of us might be traveling. Nobody's going on any vacation except me?
I'm not. 9th also works. It doesn't matter to me. Does it matter?
My board reports won't be ready by the 9th. Like the Treasurers report, those things, seven-day turnaround is not ideal for me.
Can we Skype you in, Lauren?
Um, maybe there'd be a reception there if I sat under the right tree.
We'll go split screen with you and Chris.
Okay.
Okay, Lauren, go ahead and book that. Was there anything else that we were forgetting? Okay, be resolved at the regular meeting of the Board of Education, be adjourned at 8:08. Come motion?
Oh, no.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? Passed? Adjourned. Thank you.